Thank you. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting of August 2, 2023. Tonight's meeting is a hybrid meeting. Community members are welcome to join us either in person or remotely through Zoom or by telephone. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Nixon.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Here.
Councilmember Falcone.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Here.
Mayor Sweet.
Here. Councilmember John Pascal is not able to join us this evening. I needed a motion to excuse him from this meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Black, seconded by Councilmember Nixon. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to read a statement regarding the tragic passing of Kirkland Fire Department's Training Battalion Chief, Bill Hoover, and his wife, Kristi, on July 21 while traveling out of state. Words cannot describe the depth of sorrow we are all feeling about the loss of Bill and Kristi. Bill was a member of the Kirkland Fire family for 31 years. He was a beloved colleague, mentor, and leader whose legacy will endure. During his time with KFD, Bill was recognized with many awards as highlights of his outstanding career. Yet Bill was much more than a firefighter, a battalion chief, and a cherished colleague. His priority was always to support, to train, to keep healthy his brothers and sisters in the fire service, showing the depth of his kind and compassionate heart and exemplified the values we hold dear in the city of Kirkland: to work hard, to work together, to show initiative and care. Bill will be remembered for his dedication to the fire service, to our sense of community, and to family. Bill and Kristi were longtime Kirkland community members. They were married in Marina Park and raised their family here for many years. Bill and Kristi's presence in our community and in the Puget Sound region will truly be missed. Family, friends, first responders, city employees, and the community are all invited to remember and honor the lives of Bill and Kristi. More information and ways to honor Bill and his family will be posted on the city's website. Now please join me in a moment of silence to honor and remember Bill and Kristi Hoover. Thank you. Okay, this takes us to item number four in our agenda, communications and the items from the audience. This is the time in our meeting when we normally hear from the public on matters that are not quasi-judicial or scheduled for a public hearing, of which there are none scheduled this evening. Please limit your remarks to three minutes, and the council will receive up to three comments on each side of every issue. If you are present either in person or virtually and would like to address the council during this Items from Audience period, please sign up using the online public comment instruction link or in person using the posted QR code. For those participating by phone, please dial *9 to be recognized to speak. Community members will be called in order in which they signed up. Items from the audience is an important part of our business meeting, and we ask that everyone be treated with kindness and respect. We ask that you please not clap or applaud after a speaker or express your disagreement with a speaker. We want everyone in Kirkland to feel welcome, expressing their viewpoints regardless of content. Because they can be disruptive, signs and placards are not allowed in council chambers during our meetings regardless of their content. City Clerk, we got a lineup?
We only have one person signed up to address the council, and that's Paul Morris.
Welcome, Mr. Morris. Come on up.
Wow, this is really cool. First up. Again, like last time, I'm so pleased to be able to speak with the council today, not to the council but with the council. And Deputy Mayor, I want to say thank you for our conversation we had the other couple of days ago. Very, very cool. I'm trying to get support throughout the whole community for public access defibrillators at sports stadiums. Very important that we have these life-saving instruments available to when, it's not an if, but when a sudden cardiac arrest event happens. We need to be prepared, and we need to have those AEDs, those defibrillators, outside where they're accessible 24 hours, seven days a week, all year round. And using the Woodinville Sports Stadium model, where it's mounted right between the restrooms over there at the sports stadium, and it has not been tampered with, hasn't been vandalized or stolen. So it's got monitoring device in the box, and it's very safe. One other thing I want to address is to Chief Sanford. I would really appreciate it if you're listening in on this meeting that you would extend invitations to members of the community who are CPR-trained and experienced to be able to be verified responders with Pulse Point Respond. That is, to be able to respond to private residences and private businesses. This model has been used in many cities throughout the country with great success. Save rates have just skyrocketed. So if you're listening, Chief, it would be really incredible if you could extend that to members of the community. I'm also having a meeting with Chief Reisen over at the Bothell Fire Department next week to discuss AEDs at sports stadiums and also the Pulse Point Verified Responder. I'm just trying to build a heart-safe community, ladies and gentlemen. I want Kirkland and every other community surrounding us to be heart-safe, trained individuals, equipment available. You get my point? I mean, seriously. Deputy Mayor, it's very important to me, and I see you're nodding, and it's really affirming to my heart that, no pun intended, but seriously, that we have an engagement throughout the entire community, and that's not just council members but also members of the residencies here. Am I being understood here? Heart-safe communities are all over the place, and you know I'm carrying the badge of CPR here, okay? And I guess I'm done. I just want you to know, Mayor Sweet, that literally I'm so grateful that you called me yesterday. I hit seven groups during the night. I taught three of those groups CPR, and a triple dozen of them actually had downloaded to their smartphones, Pulse Point Respond.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. We'll be taking that item up later on today.
You are awesome. Thank you very much, and thanks for the email, too.
Thank you.
It helped me a lot, I'm telling you. Google mapping it all over the place.
Okay.
You take care.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm going to just excuse myself.
You may be.
Is John Lloyd going to be presenting virtually?
Yes.
There's a yes. Presentation on AEDs at the end of the.
Right. I will just wait to hear that presentation, and then I'll.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, we've had an additional sign up. Alex Zimmerman.
Mr. Zimmerman.
You're next.
Give me a chance to speak. Yeah. The high. The Nazi Gestapo fascist. A mafia who support Iranian Muslim war. America with Iranian Muslim. Yeah. Yeah. This exactly what is happening right now. This is a huge problem. This exactly what is I come. Try speak. Bellevue don't give me a chance to speak for the last few months, totally block me. Yeah. I don't understand why Democrat, local Democrat, support Iranian Muslim war. I cannot understand this. In all countries, in this planet, when you have a war.
Point of order, Madam Mayor. I believe that the speaker is using the podium for improper purpose for campaigning.
You see, I told you. How Iranian war can be campaigning? How this can be campaigning?
Not allow public resources to be used, and the description he's made is of his opponent in his race for Bellevue.
I don't talk about opponent. I talk about war with Iran, what is we have now. Soldier dying, American citizen dying, Israel have problem, American problem. We have real problem with Iran Republic. What are you talking about?
Mr. Zimmerman, because you are engaged in a political competition with someone it sounds like you are describing in your tirade, I'm going to ask you to step down.
I don't understand. I talk about Iranian war. Why are you talking about? I mentioned somebody, name, personal. I talking about war, what is we have? Two, 2,500 soldiers deploy right now in Iran territory. Ships, everything, it's a war. Why you don't give me a chance talking about this? Because Democrats support Iranian war? Where is the problem? Why you play stupid? Because you don't want, what is I use Democrat in support of Iranian war? I cannot understand why. Why Democrats support Iranian war? Why I can't speak in Bellevue for the last few months? Yeah, with same trick, what is you told me right now? Oh, you talking about Iranian war is because your opponent is Iranian. I'm not care about him. I care about Israel. I care about atomic bomb, but as Russian will be help Iran doing this this year or next year. They will be using Israel, and I care about 8 million Jew. I don't want what is 8 million Jew killed because Democrats support Iranian war. You know what this mean? So how, when you stop and acting like a psychopath, like an idiot, can you explain to me?
Thank you.
I never broken rule for one second. No, it's a serious problem. You understand what is I'm talking? We have war with Iran now. Israel have, America have, shoulder to shoulder. I'm a Jew. I'm supposed to protect my people. I supposed to protect America too because it's my people too. And you talk me about election.
Mr. Zimmerman.
I'm not care about election.
Mr. Zimmerman, your time is up.
I have 12 election before.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Well, time I lose, so what?
Your time is up. And I apologize to the audience for Mr. Zimmerman's behavior.
There are no additional speakers.
Thank you. This takes us to item number eight, special presentations, Lake Washington Institute of Technology update. City Manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. We're very excited today to have Dr. Amy Morrison, President of Lake Washington Institute of Technology, to check in with us. We haven't seen her for quite some time, and we're very happy to have her. She's going to give us some updates on what's happening with our favorite local technical college.
Very favorite.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much for inviting me here this evening. I am so pleased to bring you up to speed quickly on what the college has been focused on these past few years and where we are today and where we are going, all in 10 minutes or less, and then happy to take any questions, of course. I don't need to tell all of you that our beloved community was ground zero for the U.S. COVID-19 pandemic, and Lake Washington Tech was dubbed Campus Zero because, as you recall, 18 of our first quarter nursing students were engaged in clinical work at Life Care Center of Kirkland. And a lot has happened since then. I just want to share with you a couple of things. Oh, okay, I might. Oh. Thanks, Diana. I'm going to scroll one and come right back here. So we have come a long way. As you recall, in just one week, our college pivoted to all online in March 2020. No small feat for a technical college. And then in June of 2020, we partially reopened, and we've been open ever since. We did receive, just for transparency's sake, both federal direct support and grant support to support students in many different ways, invest in critical IT and high flex. In higher ed, we love our terms, which is short for hybrid flexible learning investments, of course prioritize campus health and safety, and then invested in on-campus childcare, which I'll come back to. But what I really wanted to just convey about that time is the fact that I personally will never forget how incredible this city was in stepping up to invite myself and our marketing communications director into what we affectionately refer to as the bunker, which was the adjacent room next to the EOC for a couple of weeks while we worked side by side through our own emergency along with the city of Kirkland. And I just want to say, I just wrapped up 10 years as president, and I am so incredibly grateful for the just tremendous support of the city, U.S. leaders, certainly Kurt and Jim and Chief Harris for always taking my calls and always really addressing the needs of the college, certainly during our most challenging times, and then more exciting times, which I'll talk about in a moment. So I just really wanted to pause. You know, I thought when we were in the EOC, if I ever had the opportunity to really come before the council and say a proper thank you, now is the time. So thank you. I also just want to say, you know, thanks to many of you in this room and our broader community. This college has enjoyed incredible support. Our foundation during, since 2020, raised over 1.7 million in student scholarship, emergency, and childcare support, and in turn, really in partnership with our community and local businesses, we graduated over 2,000 essential workers in our healthcare professions, public health, IT, and business alone. We've learned a lot since the pandemic, and we certainly are coming through stronger and ready for what's next. So let me just talk a little bit about where we are today. We continue to lead the state in bachelors of applied science degree development and grow new programs. Paraeducator is a need with our local school districts, continuing to grow new four-year programs, and we're very excited about our latest legislative approval for our bachelor's of science in computer science, building on our applied bachelor's degrees in software development. As you know, our college has been committed to DEI work for many years, as you could see a couple of highlights here. I'm very proud of the fact that our faculty have stepped up in all of our associate degrees, and soon our applied bachelor's degrees will have at least one dedicated diversity and social justice course, which is really intended to help prepare all of our students for a multicultural and global workplace and to be able to be successful in those workplaces. So let's talk about the future of Lake Washington Tech. We have a lot of exciting things to look forward to, and we really are poised for transformation. Many of you know, as you come onto our campus, as you come to kind of the main part of the campus, you'll pass some, a little well-worn, well-loved yellow portables that currently comprise our early learning center. Those portables we purchased used 25 years ago. So thanks really during the pandemic to support from Congresswoman Del Benet, the State Department of Commerce, our own college foundation, and we're hopeful for some county support soon as well. We will be able to construct a new and expanded early learning center on our campus. So that is very exciting. That will take place at the end of this year and into next year, and we look forward to inviting you to that ribbon cutting next year. I will just say our early learning center serves not only the children of our students, the average age of our students is 30, but also the children of our employees as well as children in the community as well. Thanks to Senator Murray and thanks from letters of support from the city leadership, we were able to secure over $1 million to make our campus more sustainable. We will have funds to put solar panels on all of our campus rooftops and able to save energy funds and to reinvest those back into instructional programs. So that project will get underway soon. And then very excitedly, as you go, as you travel across the campus on 132nd at the entrance, currently there's kind of an open grassy area, that will be the home of our next instructional building, our Center for Design, seen here. And this will be a two-story, 50,000-square-foot instructional facility that will house many of our high-demand programs such as gaming, applied design, architecture, art illustration at both the two-year and the four-year level. And then this, in the rendering, the kind of glassy, glass windowed area, that will be the multipurpose space, which will seat 500. So we're very excited that that will be a place to really showcase our student work as well as we hope will be a new hub for the greater community. Here's a view of looking at the campus toward the facility, and then a couple of renderings of the inside of the building, which really is intended, the entire building is intended to be a canvas to showcase student work and student creativity. So all told, these three investments will total over $45 million in construction funds coming into our college and our community in the next couple of years. So a lot of things to look forward to. I will certainly give you an invitation to the groundbreaking later this year for our Center for Design, and then ask you to join us for our ribbon cutting next year for our new early learning center. So thank you again for so many years of support. This college is very proud to be in this community, and I'm happy to answer any questions or anything I can help with this evening.
Council? Amy, I would really appreciate if you would send me a copy of your stack so that I could share it with Larry, because he's going to be really excited.
Yeah, great. Well, certainly Representative Springer was a huge champion of our Center for Design. We really would not have been able to have that project funded without support from our legislature and Governor Inslee. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go out and enjoy the sun for the rest of the evening.
Anything else I can help with? Okay. All right. Thank you so much for the invitation.
Bye now. Okay. So that takes us to our consent calendar. Before I ask for a motion for the consent calendar, ask Deputy Mayor Arnold for an audit of the accounts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had payroll in the amount of $5,772,479.16, and bills in the amount of $5,972,476.58.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to pass the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Councilmember Kelly, or Councilmember Curtis, seconded by Councilmember Falcone. All those in favor, please signify by saying, any discussion, I'm sorry. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries unanimously. That takes us to, holy cow, our business agenda. And the first item on our business agenda is the legislative request memorandum. Would it be memorandum?
Each one is a dumb, I believe, but we have three in a row, yes. So you're probably right.
City Manager.
So our first one, thank you. Let's make sure this on. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we have three that have been carried over from the previous council meeting, and we are looking for council direction on each of them. The first of them is relating to a legislative request we received about updating the Code of Ethics to account for the difference between board and commission members and council members. So I have a short presentation by our Assistant City Attorney, Darcy Ilers.
Apparently I did it wrong despite my best efforts. Thank you. All right, try again. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. I have the pleasure of presenting Kevin's item on the Code of Ethics and Conduct Acknowledgement Forms, as the City Manager tripled indicated. So as quick background, as you know, you sign an acknowledgement form related to the city's Code of Ethics, which is adopted in the KMC, and you also have a Code of Conduct in the Policies and Procedures Manual that you adopted. And everyone on council and the boards and commission members signs acknowledgement forms, one related to ethics and one related to the Code of Conduct. And presently, council members and boards and commission members signed the same forms. So there'd been a request for staff to bring back to council whether separate forms should be signed for each of those, the Code of Ethics and Code of Conduct for council members and then also for boards and commission members. So that was the request summary there. And the reason sort of for that was about the different roles that the council members have as elected officials and the boards and commission members in their different sort of advisory capacities to council. So the, as I indicated, the primary question, the issue is whether to have different forms. The legislative request memo had indicated there were some options for you, including if you do want separate forms, sort of also ancillary issues about whether you want those signed once at the beginning of a term or more often annually. And as you know, you have to sign annual financial disclosure statements. The boards and commission members aren't bound by the same RCW, but the KMC on ethics has a requirement for an annual disclosure form, so making it less than annual, they still have to submit a form. So that might be one piece that weighs into how often they sign them.
Any discussion?
Try to be quick.
Do we want to look at the options? Have you got those, Darcy?
I have these, the options here sort of about whether which.
But also, if I may also jump in, since Darcy's filling in, one of the things you saw in the memo was that the city attorney has assessed that making a small change between the two for the boards and commissions and council would not be a large investment of staff time, and they felt that that was something that could be very doable under the current workload. But the question of whether or not to have annual disclosures or more often, or once a term, is something that we would like some direction on.
The one that, one of the options that you saw in your memo was also about, you know, whether you wanted us to bring back sort of thinking about comprehensive review of the Code of Ethics and Code of Conduct back to you. So that one sort of wasn't factored necessarily into whether that would take staff time. That would take more staff time, obviously, than just updating them.
Of course. Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move that we direct staff, and this is on page 228 of your packet, bullet points two and three, I would move that we direct staff to prepare ethics and conduct code acknowledgements separate between city council members and board and commission members, and that we consider any necessary updates to the city's ethics codes or policies as recommended by staff.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember, by Deputy Mayor Arnold and seconded by Councilmember Falcone to adopt options two and three. Any discussion? Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one supportive of this motion, the one thing I wanted to maybe suggest is the degree of flexibility we would have in an acknowledgement, that we would have the capacity with a clause or two in an acknowledgement to make it clear that a subject, a topic in our Code of Ethics that really is about elected officials and council members and their role that don't apply to folks on boards and commissions. There's a lot, I'm just suggesting, there's a lot of flexibility we can use with actual modifications to the Code of, the acknowledgement itself that could prevent us from really having to crack open the Code of Ethics itself. So I was just going to make that suggestion, that I would like us to maybe exhaust the possibilities of what we do with the acknowledgement before we necessarily muck around with the Code of Ethics, for lack of a better description. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Dixon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did want to observe that since we developed the Code of Ethics and Conduct through the Ethics Task Force back in 2010 and 2011 and adopted it in January of 2012, to the best of my knowledge, there's never been a complaint. And to me, that says that they work, that they're written in a way that's quite understandable, and that the fact that we had some board or commission members unwilling to sign the acknowledgement is probably not an indication that there's something wrong with the Code of Ethics or Conduct. It's just an issue with their understanding of what they're committing to, or maybe with understanding what information they're required to provide and whether that will become a public record or not. And so I think the main thing here, and I'm sure this is encompassed in the motion, so I'm not proposing an amendment, is that we need to fully understand what the concerns have been and make sure that we address those concerns. I think, I don't think I've ever heard a concern from any members of the council, but that's because we're used to being under a microscope, and I don't think members of boards and commissions are quite so used to that. So I think if we can get that information about what it was that really caused them to have concerns, I think we can do this pretty quickly.
Thank you. Further discussion, Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Just to respond to Council-
Just to respond to Councilmember Nixon's points, I did talk to some commissioners that had asked about concerns, saying, what is this? They had not recalled having to sign one of these before. I'm not sure if, you know, this was something that didn't get followed up with as robustly during the pandemic, just were confused by some of the language about the city manager and working through staff. And I also thought this was an opportunity, given some of the discussions we've had with boards and commissions at reinforcing the role of them being advisory, and opportunity to clean up on both. So that was the feedback that I heard from some of the commissioners who talked to me directly about their concerns when presented with this.
Okay, so the question is on the motion to approve options B and C, or two and three?
Uh huh.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Arnold, seconded by Councilmember Falcone. I didn't write it down, sorry. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Deputy Mayor Arnold.
And I would move that we direct staff, or that we direct staff to collect these forms once per term.
Second. Moved by Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Arnold, seconded by Councilmember Curtis to have staff use these forms at the beginning of every term. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Okay, our next item is legislative request memo about the automated external defibrillators in parks. And here to make that presentation, we have our Deputy Director of Parks and Community Services, John Lloyd, as well as Lenz Wachstra, our director.
Good evening, council. Just a second, I have the screen shared, and you will get going. Are you seeing the correct screen?
We are.
Perfect. It's always a fun, fun game to figure out you shared correctly. So, good evening, as I said, I am here to discuss AEDs in parks and what it would take to evaluate your request. I've got a very short presentation for you that we'll jump into. So just as a refresher, at your June 6 meeting, there was a request made for an LRM to be developed to better understand what it would take to deploy AEDs at active recreation sites at outdoor locations. So that's what we are going to be talking about. Excuse me. There are several considerations that need to be evaluated prior to deploying AEDs, which are outlined in the LRM. On this slide, there's a very high-level overview of some of the effort that would be needed to evaluate our options and to develop a more refined proposal for your consideration. Rather than jump into all the details and rehash what's written, I figure the LRM speaks for itself. In general, we anticipate kind of the research and development of a proposal to take probably between 40 and 60 hours of staff time to evaluate, provide the engagement, develop protocols, all the rest of the stuff that was outlined. We've provided a few options for your consideration in terms of how and when we can return with this information. With the upcoming ballot measure, our capacity is fairly limited until November, which is reflected in these proposed options. The first option would be to begin this work in November following the election. We would then come back to you in early 2024 with more information for evaluation and consideration. Alternately, we could delay this until the budget cycle, the next budget cycle in the middle of next year for the 2025-26 budget process. That would give us plenty of time to conduct the necessary research and develop a proposal for your consideration as a service package. Option three is a little different than your request, but it would still take some time to develop and work out, where we could develop a checkout program for athletic field users. And option four is maintain status quo and do not proceed to further evaluation of AEDs in the parks. So at this point, I'll turn it over to you all to see if you have any questions or for discussion.
Thank you, John. John, why don't you leave the options slide up? If you would. Thank you. Counsel, discussion. Let's start. Councilmember Nixon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I for one, since I was the one who proposed the LRM, am very interested in this. I do believe that having these available saves lives, particularly in active recreation sites. And I think the key question is the timing. We know that our parks staff is very busy, at least for the rest of this year. And I think that we need to have a thorough job done on this so that we can figure out how to deploy in phases and make sure that the budget accommodates it. And so I think that, say, at least a combination of option one and option two should be considered. But I also like the idea of an AED checkout option, right? Because having the sports leagues be able to check them out and have them there would be a way to ensure that they're present, at least when competition is taking place. But then that would not cover pickup games or, you know, other, like, I think about 132nd Square Park and how excited the folks at Kirkland Heights have been about having that right across the street from them. And, you know, if they have a very active game, that you could have someone have cardiac arrest, and you would like for it to just be there. So I guess in a sense, I support option one, two, and three, and having the staff report back to us on all of those. And I don't think that having it done, at least between now and November, makes sense.
Thank you. Councilmember Falcone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you, Councilmember Nixon, for your comments. I generally agree with what I've heard so far from Councilmember Nixon. I do, my preference between options one and two would obviously be option one, just so we can get these out there sooner, as we heard in testimony earlier tonight. This is something that's, you know, a need in the community and something that could potentially save lives. So the sooner we can get them out there, the better, but we want to do it right. And so I also agree with Councilmember Nixon that I'd like to see us, given the timing consideration, that it takes some time to also pursue option three. But with that, I would like for that to be a sooner option than our longer-term plan. I really could see option three as being something that was used longer term, but also in the interim while we're evaluating and getting the longer-term, more permanently installed AEDs in place, that we could have something. And I hope that that would be something that we would be proactive about. In particular, if we're going with option two, it sounds like that wouldn't even be ready to go until 2025, I'm guessing, the implementation for that season. And so we would miss all of, not only the remaining of this year, but all of next spring, summer, fall, sports as well. And so I would love for, I think option three can really help with that. I'm also curious about indoor facilities as well. That's not something I think we've really talked much about as part of this, but curious how that may work. You know, I think of, you know, basketball leagues and other things. I believe that the schools have some of these in their buildings, but I'd be curious to have more information about that and any other facilities that we use as far as what is available, what is the training to our staff, to our coaches and volunteers, through the, our parks department as well, and as well as those who program on our facilities that we manage both in the schools and on city property with Little League obviously being a big one, but the many other organizations as well. So I would love that to be proactive as part of this process, both for the long term and the shorter term with checking out these devices. Thank you.
Councilmember Curtis.
My suggestion is that we go with option one, and we fold option two and three in option one and do a long, a longer, this is the busiest time for the parks department. Their workload is heavy right now, so it's realistic to have this research begin in November, but we can include stages. First, we do checkout, then we do all in a new park, and this is what a long-term service package would look at. So my recommendation is to go with option one and fold two and three within it. And my only other feedback is, is one of the things in the LRM was a discussion about the impact of parks on having to service these items, make sure that they're safe, ready to use. I would think that that would be a collaboration with our fire department, and that perhaps the fire department would take over the responsibility of making sure that they're ready to roll and in good condition to be used. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support Councilmember Curtis's suggestion of moving in stages with research beginning in November and doing some pilot and other work moving forward as part of a service package in the budget discussions that we have next year.
Thank you.
And, but I am flexible on during that research on if the pilot starts with a checkout system, or if the pilot starts in, with an installed facility in a particular park.
Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Deputy Mayor probably said it as well as I could have said it. I think I agree with him, which means I'm agreeing with, well, there's really a lot of consensus up here, but I guess agreeing with the way that Councilmember Curtis characterized it. I do feel like I need more information before I can really understand the budget impact. How many locations are we talking about? And what makes the most sense? And what's it all going to cost? But I think that's not inconsistent with what we've just described here. So we'll do the research. It sounds like we're going to do the research. We're going to have a lot more information from staff come early 2024, and then we can look at, you know, what it would really mean for the budget, if there are some opportunities to do this in 2024, whether we need to fold it into the 2025-26 budget. But I think we can be opportunistic throughout the entire phases for a pilot program here or a checkout program there. So I support that. Thanks.
Thank you. I think we largely have consistent, or consensus. I would, I would add one more caveat, however. I would like to not consider 132nd Park done until it gets an AED. I think it should be a new standard for particularly turf fields, and that would be something I would, I would ask the park board to look at in terms of standards for parks as we build them, redevelop them. But I think 132nd Street Park actually gives us an opportunity both to pilot it and to have sort of a target for that research that would happen, starting in November. Any response to that? Yay!
We will be back.
Okay. Thanks, John.
So what, actually, I'm sorry to ask for this, but I think a motion would be helpful, but I think what I heard is do option one, which lays out the other options. And I think with the mayor adding that, and explore, could you put an AED at 132nd Square Park as a pilot? So if we could get a motion for that, then we can.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Falcone, seconded by Councilmember Curtis. Fine. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And we'll send the council information on AEDs in buildings. I believe we have them in all of our buildings, but I need to double-check that. I know we have them in our community centers. We have them in City Hall, the Justice Center, I believe the fire stations as well. But so indoor AEDs are definitely have been a priority in the past, but we'll make sure we send you the inventory. I know the schools also do as well, so that's a great point, but we do have those.
Super. And that takes us to item C.
Okay, our third and final LRM for this evening was a request about allowing electric foot scooters and other similar electric devices on the Cross Kirkland Corridor. And here to give you that presentation is Julie Underwood, our Public Works Director.
Good evening, counsel. We have an LRM that would allow electric foot scooters, unicycles, et cetera, on the Cross Kirkland Corridor. Oh, I forgot to do that. I was thinking, don't forget to do that, and I forgot. Okay. And we thought, well, is there another way to categorize these? And there is another way. So let's see if I can. Electric-assisted micro-mobility devices. I know that's a mouthful, but that's what I think this is really about. This is about electric scooters, e-electric scooters, of course, electric bikes, and some of those other devices, the unicycles and such. It would not include things like mopeds, or golf carts, or the medical devices like a rascal or anything like that. This is really devoted to those things that you see on the screen. And this is a term that is used by the Federal Highway Administration. We have three options for you to consider. Option one is direct staff to, in fact, expand this use, but kind of evaluate that as part of the transportation master plan update that we're currently involved in at the moment. Option two is just move forward and making that code change now. And then option three is just status quo.
Okay. Who wants to start us off? Councilmember Curtis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Julie, option one would be a longer process, but we would spend a lot of time really researching this, and it would go through the Transportation Commission as well, correct?
Correct. And I would probably advise maybe option one and two would go through both. And at the last Transportation Commission meeting, I should mention, when I noted that you were considering this item, they were really pleased to hear that.
Okay. I'm going to recommend option one because I think that whatever we implement will go beyond the CKC. We're really looking at alternative forms of transportation, and electric vehicles are the next thing. So I recommend option one, that we take our time, we do it right, we do it thoughtfully. As I've been thinking about this, I've been thinking about, I've spent a lot of time on the CKC this summer, and what I'm seeing is not gas-powered vehicles, but vehicles that go quite fast without any requirement for pedaling. And so I really want to look closely on what kind of vehicles that we're clear. I'm very concerned about speeding as an issue, and as we consider this, I want to look at what we can do to not only enforce the speed limit, but also educate everyone on what the speed limit is. I want to be really clear that it's not any sort of gas-powered vehicle at any time. It's all-electric, so we need more signs, more monitoring, more education. I also want to think about how we, we're destined for conflicts. So how can we track conflicts and complaints? And we've talked about this before when we were talking about Vision Zero, and we're not really tracking what's happening on the CKC. I would be interested in what's happening on other parts of the East Rail system. And then also, while we're talking about this, we've been talking a lot about electric vehicle infrastructure charging, but we also need to think about charging systems for these type of transportation devices.
Thank you. Councilmember Falcone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I agree with moving forward with option one. I do believe that this, like Councilmember Curtis said, is bigger than just the CKC, although I see that as a component of it. A lot of the things that she mentioned relating to the CKC, I think, also relate citywide, right? We've all seen e-bikes that go faster than 25 miles an hour, right? That sometimes pass us as we're going the speed limit in automobiles. So I would like to take a look at that. I think both education and enforcement are important, and, yeah, I mean, even at National Night Out last night, I heard from some neighbors who were asking about, how can, how can I help enforce? I, you know, I do my part, and I commute with my bike to work, and there are, you know, near misses all the time because of folks who are driving and texting and not, and not paying attention and not following the rules of the road. So I think it's not just education around folks who are using these vehicles, but folks who are also in traditional automobiles and trucks and other vehicles as well that need education. I think this is something that we could do comprehensively. We do, I think, a good job I think, a good job in our schools of kind of educating kids on bike safety, and I think that's great. And I think that everybody, myself included, could use a refresher. And there's been changes in laws on who has the right of way and when. And I think that having some sort of educational program, I know I've raised this before, but perhaps this is where we folded in and work a little bit more on the education piece, is making sure that people really understand who has the right of way, when, and what all those rules are.
I know when I lived in the Bay Area, my son biked to school. He actually got a ticket for not stopping. And of course, he, instead of, he wasn't going to, you know, get a citation, of course. I mean, he was like 13, okay? He was like 14. But he was required to go to class put on by PD. Of course, it was full of kids, but it was such a great way for them, as you said, to educate. It was kind of like, I think it kind of got his attention and also helped really educate him and us as parents. So that might be something to explore with PD.
Yeah, absolutely. I would just add to that, that drivers need to be interested.
Motorists, too.
Motorists, yes.
Deputy Mero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also support option one. In addition to what I've heard about saying we need to think about these vehicles, not just on the corridor, but on city streets, I think we also have to look at not just the Cross Kirkland Corridor, but the broader East Trail. The East Trail Regional Advisory Council has an item to discuss shared policies at some point this year. We have not gotten to that. We wanted to talk about lighting, hours of use. These type of vehicles would be another one, just to get some input on. And ideally, we would look to a policy that is consistent through the entire East Trail. Thank you.
Councilmember Nixon?
Thank you. I agree with everything that's been said. And I just wanted to mention that I have received a few emails from folks who have reviewed the council packet. And pretty universally, they say that the concerns they have with the speed enforcement don't apply only to electric vehicles. There's also pedal power. People can get up to a pretty good clip. And so I think the general question of speed enforcement on trails in general is something we have to look at. And, you know, I don't imagine KPD is going to be out there with a radar gun, but maybe we can look at best practices in other locations, find out, because I'm sure we're not the first place that this problem has happened, and see if we can figure out what the right solution is for that. And education is a big part of it. But even with enforcement, you have to figure out, well, what's the consequences? And what if somebody gets banned from using the trail, and then they come back? What do you do, right? Anytime that we're going to create enforcement and penalties and those sort of things, we have to figure out, well, how are we going to enforce the penalties, too? So it gets complicated fast. But anyway, I just wanted to say that it's a broader question than just, you know, electric scooters or electric bikes.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Black?
I was just going to make the motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just going to agree with what's been said. I wanted to, I like the idea of a comprehensive process. I did want to, you know, for our public who's listening, we do tend with our LRM's to start talking in terms that kind of sound like we're making decisions. And this is not a decision to allow electrically assisted vehicles on the CKC or anywhere else yet, until we've gone through this comprehensive study with the Transportation Commission and work by our transportation staff. So I'm going to be really excited to see what comes out of this analysis. And some of my colleagues have made some really good points about some of the things we should be looking at. So I'm excited and supportive. Thanks.
Thank you. Before I ask Councilmember Curtis for a motion, I just want to make one comment, and that is that I think that one of the things that we should consider doing now, because it's already a problem, is I think we should consider putting a speed indicator going either direction, in the heavier areas on the CKC, like they've gone on Market Street, where it says you got to slow down to 25 miles an hour, and it blinks fast, fast, fast if you don't. Anyway, I think that's worth considering, because I think people will learn from that, and they will hold each other accountable, more likely. Anyway, Councilmember Curtis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we evaluate expansion of allowed electric micro-mobility devices in current right-of-way and TMP processes and bring forward any changes as part of those processes.
Moved by Councilmember Curtis, seconded by Councilmember Falcone to accept option number one. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, this takes us to item number, there's nothing else, right? Item number nine, City Council Reports. Councilmember Nixon?
Well, I guess the key thing is to compliment the KPD and others who were involved in the National Night Out last night. It was very well done. I was able to get to four different sites, and all were well-attended for the size of the neighborhood that it was in. And I appreciate, I don't know if I'll name names, but the officer that I was able to ride with was excellent. Hopefully, he's watching. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not a lot to report. Probably the main thing is I wanted to report back to my colleagues concerning Chief Harris's presentation about our street racing and sound enforcement pilot program and her report to the Regional Law, Safety, and Justice Committee. I want to thank her, if she's listening, for taking the time to prepare that and to do that. And a great deal of interest from a lot of our neighboring jurisdictions about that pilot program. And I got a lot of questions from some of our fellow elected officials from other jurisdictions after that presentation. So that was great. I think the Vella Apartments ribbon-cutting was between our last meeting and this one, if I'm not mistaken. And the one thing I wanted to highlight, it was a really well-attended event, and the mayor spoke, and so did our Director of Planning and Building, Adam Weinstein. And really well-attended, people excited. One of the things I thought was just great is the common space that's available now right there on Lake Street for the community. My son and I visited there while we were visiting downtown last night and got to enjoy that space. So just really excited about that as a third place for people to come together and community. Last thing I'll mention is just, me and some of my colleagues were able to attend the SCA, the Sound Cities Association Summer Social. All I really want to say there is just how much I enjoy the amazing people who are elected officials for all of our neighboring municipalities. Just every time I get together with folks who do this work, I love you guys, too, but from some of our neighboring jurisdictions, I'm just so impressed with the people who devote their time and attention to this work. And so I always really enjoy that. And I enjoyed it, a beautiful summer afternoon, visiting with them. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Curtis?
I just want to thank my colleagues, who I also love, for taking the time to meet with Diana and Adriana in preparation for our next legislative session.
Thank you. Councilmember Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, similar to Councilmember Nixon, I enjoyed riding along with a wonderful KPD officer last night to several different neighborhood events as part of National Night Out. Gosh, we have some really awesome community members. I had some great conversations. I saw some friends and neighbors and familiar faces and met some new folks last night, too. And they were really engaged. They came prepared with questions from when we arrived, and that was great. So really, really appreciated that. Also enjoyed, like Councilmember Black mentioned, the Sound Cities Association Social that we had. Was that last week? Gosh, time is just mushing together right now. But that was a great time. You know, got to see some folks that I've only met virtually through meetings over the years, and to see them live and in person, and give them a hug, and get to, you know, spend some time together in person, face-to-face, was really wonderful. Councilmember Curtis and I enjoyed a ribbon-cutting ceremony for a new Northern Indian restaurant called Art in downtown Kirkland. And that was a beautiful event, beautiful ceremony, and some delicious food, if I might say so, that we enjoyed. And what's the other thing I was going to mention? See, this is why I was in the middle of taking notes on what I was going to mention about last weekend. Councilmember Curtis, what was the other? We attended another city? No. No. Anyway, lots of other amazing things that I can't even remember all of them right now, because I'm so tired from doing all these wonderful things in the community. So, thank you.
Deputy Mero?
Two things to note. The East Trail Regional Advisory Committee met on Thursday, July 27. I sent notes in your inbox. I wanted to highlight a couple of things. East Trail Partners is organizing a tour with congressional staff in August, highlighting some opportunities for funding in Bellevue. Woodinville will be having their spike removal ceremony on September 6th, as they finally start to remove their rails from their segment of the East Trail, which will connect directly to the Cross Kirkland Corridor. And then finally, Kirkland received broad congratulations for the Totem Lake Connector opening. The big quote was, "Kirkland really knows how to throw a party."
Well done.
Secondly, that same day, the Sound Transit Board met. I testified on behalf of Kirkland with Mayor Herbig, Mayor Thompson, and Councilmember Zahn in support of Sound Transit Board moving forward on 405 Stride Bus Rapid Transit. While all the discussions on the light rail alignment in Seattle got all the press, the board did vote to move forward with their baseline budget, which keeps this project moving as an early win of Sound Transit 3.
Excellent. Back to you, Councilmember Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The thing I forgot was one of the most fun things, and perhaps that's why I forgot it. Councilmember Nixon and Councilmember Curtis and I had the honor of throwing out the first pitch of the Junior Little League World Series this past weekend. And as usual, wow, there's some awesome athletes there. It was wonderful to meet those young female athletes from around the world that were competing. And it's just such an honor to say a few words and to get to throw out the first pitch. So congratulations again to each of you, amazing athletes. We're so proud of you, and we're proud to host that event annually here since 1999, I believe, here in the city of Kirkland. Thank you.
Thank you. And I really don't have much to report. I'm spending most of my time trying to get Larry back and forth to Eastern Washington so we can remodel the kitchen.
I left sustainability ambassadors for you.
Oh, good God.
Madam Mayor?
We, yes, I'm so glad you reminded me. We spent most of an afternoon, right? Deputy Mayor Arnold, myself, and Councilmember Curtis spent great hours with Peter Donaldson and the Sustainability Ambassadors. This was the teachers group, and it is a group of incredibly engaged and excited people taking this work on very seriously. One of the issues that came up, however, is, and I've talked with Lindsay about this since then, is the fact that Kirkland has a really dynamic process of working with the school district, working with people on the school board, that is not replicated in Sumamish and Redmond. And that concerned me in the sense that I know we struggled a little bit with the resource officer discussion. It seems like we need to be working a little harder together as a unit, as people who are supported by the school district. And so I'd like to see some more conversation like that before you guys have your next meeting, because apparently Sumamish doesn't meet with John Holman at all. Anyway, and they don't have any representatives that do. So that was fun. It was engaging. There were two students there. People are, I mean, we're obviously pushing sustainability in the right direction. And I think Peter Donaldson has done an amazing job over the last 10 years of this body of work. So that was really exciting to be part of. With that, I'm going to take us to City Manager Reports.
Okay. So, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have three quick items. The first item is, you had asked us to go over the park ballot explanatory statement with the Kirkland Initiative folks. Jim Lopez and Lynn Zwagstra facilitated that conversation, along with Hillary Dela Cruz. And I was not able to attend that, but my understanding was they, once again, were incredibly engaged and had lots of thoughtful insight. They did make the statement much better. They actually had us flip it, so the discussion of the ordinance and the pool is first. I'm going to send you all the final statement later tonight. I meant to do it this morning, but obviously, our city attorney's issue got a little, took up to my calendar. So I'll send you to that tonight. It's going to go to the county tomorrow or Friday morning. So stay tuned on that. And then, secondly, you probably saw my email, but I just want to make sure I let you know again that we have our tent city coming to the North Lot in partnership with the church. We have not had one of these for about three years, but prior to that, we had a pretty smooth process, which is back in place and is working really well, except that we used to have an internal communications team, and almost every member of that team is turned over. So that part didn't go as well as we had wanted it to go. So we did learn about it a little bit later than normal. But the permit process and the community notification process has all happened. The intent is to have that tent city starting this Friday setting up, and it will be here through the end of October, maybe the first week of November. And it's Camp United We Stand, and it's a group that has rotated out of Seattle and has been one that's been on the rotation throughout the region before. So excited to welcome them back and do some community outreach as well. It's an important way that we do this. Well, we all try to find enough housing for everybody, but just want to make sure the community and the council knows that that's going to happen starting this weekend.
Counsel, can I have your permission to ask Amy to see if she can find us an evening when we can host a dinner?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
And finally, my last item, I just want you to know that I mentioned this at a previous council meeting, but tomorrow is our first major ARCH Board Strategic Planning Workshop. It's board members and related staff and others. As I mentioned before, our intent is, we've gone through a lot in ARCH recently, and essentially to come up with a new strategic plan going forward based on the current successful programs. We'll be checking in with the member councils repeatedly after this strategic planning session tomorrow, which I chair. We'll be sending an update to each of the councils at the end of August. There will also be a major December check-in with councils, where we're going to send you a draft of sort of the framework and issues that we've come up with. And the goal is to bring a final draft to councils in February, and then an adoption of the new strategic plan by councils in March. So there's nothing too dramatic that you haven't been leaders on before, but if during our monthly meetings, any of you want to talk about the ARCH strategic planning effort, I'm happy to do that, but we'll be keeping you in the loop as a full council throughout the process. So I want to let you know that's what will be tomorrow afternoon. I'm excited to work with my colleagues on that.
Great.
And that is all I have. Are there any calendar changes or updates that the council wants before we finish?
Seeing none.
Okay, then my report is finished. Thank you, Madam.
It's a miracle. I haven't had to do this in five years. This is an additional time in our meeting when we normally can hear from the public on matters that are not quasi-judicial or otherwise scheduled for public hearing on our agenda tonight. And assuming the rest of our meeting has been concluded before 10:00 PM, is there anyone from the public who wishes to make comments now, either in person or via phone or Zoom? If you're present in person or virtually and would like to address the council, please sign up using the online public comment instruction link or in-person using the posted QR code. For those participating by phone, please dial *9 to be recognized to speak. Community members will be called in the order in which they sign up.
Mayor, no one has signed up, and we have no virtual attendees.
And is there anybody in the audience who wishes to address the council? It's your last chance. Okay, in which case, I'm going to declare this meeting closed. Happy vacation. Adjourned.
Thank you. Have a wonderful August, everybody.
Yes, thank you very much.